This time I would say a motion to approve the agenda.
I saw a move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Passes. Members of the public wishing to be heard? Looks like we have none. So we will jump down to the public hearing. Just want to make the note that there is a typo. This is the 2022 county budget, not 2021. So there is a typo there. So we would, at this time, call the public hearing to order. Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, just give a brief explanation for new members or the people that are watching online. My name is Randy Schultz. I'm the county administrator for Chippewa. So the process is I'll go through the budget presentation. This is really for the public, for the public to give input. And then at the end of the business items is where the county board either makes changes to the budget and can ask questions at that time. So first of all, I'd like to thank all the department heads for the hard work that went into preparing this budget. Budgets are always kind of animals to themselves. They're always interesting and always challenging. I'd also like to thank Lori and her staff, our finance director, for all the hard work they put in, and also to the county board members at the committee level and again at the county board level for their work. So just starting out on page two of my presentation, this really is just the initial instructions that we put out to staff. And then on the bottom, we look at our strategic plan. The next document we have is the letter that goes out, the proposed budget. There has been some changes since that proposal came in front of the county board. And really, for this page, I'll talk about shared revenue. As you remember, last time, we weren't sure exactly where that was going to come in. Shared revenue came in a little higher at $33,780. We did lose a little bit. Computer aid was down $4,493 and personal property was down $209. So the difference between the two is $29,078. We had that to add to the budget. We also realized that we had a tit that terminated and that increased our levy limits by $9,757. Although, as the rest of the information really stayed consistent, you can see the decrease to the levy of $3.10. The percentage, just because there's a little bit of a dollar change, went to 5.10%. It was 5.06%, so not a huge change. And then the remaining numbers stayed the same. And then we always want to talk about budget highlights, areas that we need to kind of focus on. The mental health, mental out-of-home placements, that type of thing for DHS. We've been talking a few years about that. I did have a meeting with Tim Isker, who's the DHS director. It may be an opportunity with some of the ARPA funds to bring some services in that may help that in the future. And as I've talked many times through our county board, I'm part of an administrative meeting once a month or once a week. And there is action moving forward to try and get some legislative changes to how some of that money is accounted for at, for the county level. The library and bridge aid, nothing changed from the budget. Health insurance, the health insurance, we budgeted 3%. It actually came in at 0%, so that was a good, that was good for the budget. Employee wages, we did stay at the 3% increase. That was in the preliminary budget. One of the biggest changes is the jailers and jail sergeants. I did send a letter out to the county board talking about this. As we're going through the budget process, normally if we're going to make this type of change, we do it early on. And we've been struggling, jailers getting staff for quite some time. But we ran into a situation where we got zero applications. So we needed to obviously move and do some changes there. So we did up their pay. That total cost was $82,650 to do that. And we spent a lot of time, I really have to thank the sheriff and jail leadership, working with finance and HR, to come up with a way to fund those and include that in this budget. So we didn't increase the levy in this budget. We were able to do it within that department. But it took some changes, that actual structural changes within the department as far as the sheriff. Part for Huber. Huber, as you know, typically people come into the sheriff, to the jail during the night and go out during the day. They changed that during COVID and they're all on ankle bracelets. And he made the decision to keep that long term. So that was a big, that's a big philosophy change in that world. So I think the sheriff felt like that was the best way to move forward, especially to free up some money for the jailers. And that was about $30,000 that freed up. Our health insurance, because of the department's size and the fact that it came in at 0% instead of 3%, freed up about $34,000. And then the last part of that, we always have to put in what our WRS anticipated cost is going to be because we don't receive that until later on in the budget process. And that was higher than what was budgeted. So we were able to come up the remaining amount for that. So that was a lot of work. That was a lot of trying to figure it again and it done. And everybody came together and we were able to do that. So that was good. The new positions, oh, we also made some other changes. I'm sorry, within the jailers, we changed the application, the qualifications for that. So it's easier to become an applicant. I think that was a good, another thing that the leadership had to do. And they also, the leadership within the jail for employee engagement and employee satisfaction, they came up with strategic plans to enhance that. So it was an all-around effort and I was really happy to see everybody come together and work really hard on that. The new positions, we did add to the new positions, the ones that were approved from the proposed budget. County board approved on 10/12. So those are included within the budget. And then this is where, you know, I talk about during the proposed budget. Again, I think it's the easiest way to see the difference in budgets from year to year. Because of the changes, we did add, we did make some changes. A couple of them I'll just point out. Corp counsel, I added $20,000 to that. Again, we've talked about this. We either got to get some contracted services in there or someday probably get a position in there, a part-time position. They're getting overwhelmed with the amount of work that's going on in there because of all the issues we've talked about many times. Then the other change is down by the general county. That was at $82,151 and it went up to $111,229, which is a difference of $29,078. The change from the preliminary to this is the percent change is now 3.44%. It was at 3.48%, so it went down a little bit, which means our levy went down from the preliminary, from $20,647.789 to what's on the board there, the $20,638.711, difference of $9,078. Or nine, yeah, $9,078. To continue, as you can see for the summary, 2022 budget is consistent with Chippewa County's strategic plan. It's sustainable for the 2023 budget and allows the current county board to address operation needs. And then we have a chart just to show the 2022 revenue sources. And that, there is a couple of changes on that. I think the intergovernmental aid went up a little bit because of those positions in CCS and CLTS that we added. The next page talks about sales tax. Our available sales tax for 2021 is $6,581,000. So we break that down into property tax credit, debt service, and airport. We did the 1.5 million or a little over for property tax credit. We did use CPI, which we've been using for years, and that was 1.4% increase. The remaining money was distributed through our KIP program. And you can see all that's been distributed in the resolutions that were behind those. And then the pie chart on the bottom talks about the 2022 sales tax distribution or how it's allocated out. The next page shows just a difference, a five-year difference between the tax levy. There really isn't a whole lot of difference, percentage here or there over the years. So that stayed pretty consistent over the last five years. Next page really, I think, gives a great snapshot of where the county is and where it's going. We broke out, we've added several charts to this over the last couple of years. But equalized valuation went up 8.99%. You can see that total. Tax rate is going to go down 5.10% or 16 cents per thousand from 3.26 to 3.10. Net new construction, and I think I mentioned this before, but net new construction is really what Lori and I look at to determine what we're going to be able, be able to afford for the next year. There's always changes in the budget besides this. But when you're at near, at net zero levy increases, our net new construction, this is the number we think about. So if you average those up, it comes up to about 300,000. And that's really kind of the number we've used over the last couple of years to anticipate our increases, our available levy to increase. Property tax levy has gone up 3.44%, which, like I mentioned. And then our allowable dollar amount to levy, to levy limits. Originally, when I proposed, did the proposal, was $12,052. Now it's $31,095. I talked earlier about, to the executive committee, I recommend keeping that in there. We're, we are going to have to do some wage studies coming up for market analysis. So I would anticipate needing that for the next year's budget. Then the bottom part, the total budget, which looks like a huge increase, and it is dollar amount wise, went from $82 million to $99 million. So I broke down some of those increases. 6.3 million of that is the ARPA funds. 8 million is us going to self-funded health insurance. We have to account for that on our books. It's not really an increase in cost, but before, this would have been on the books of the insurance company. Now they're on our books because we're going to have that fund. The 1.5 million is for RWC. As you know, that continues to grow with Medicare and Medicaid reimbursements or funding. $398,000, a little more than that, was for the CCS and CLTS positions. And then our bridge aid and our library aid, which we really can't control, that they tell us what that's going to do. And that's outside the levy, levy limits, that it gets us almost up to the $17,253 increase in levy, or in total budget. Yeah, we're not going to have that levy, that'd be a lot. The next page talks about our balance, our general fund balance, which is at 37.1%. We talked about this a lot during bonding season, that we want to keep that between 30 and 40%. Hopefully above 35% is really good. And if you see the previous years, currently we're in our healthiest fiscal point for our fund balance. Then the budget summary, the recommended total budget is the $99,416,815. Recommended tax levy is $20,638.711, increase of 3.44%. And the recommended tax rate is $3.10, which is a decrease of 5.10%. Number two talks about our bonding with being at 37.1%. We're in good shape with bonding and looking to the future. And then the recommended rate, or tax rate is $3.10. I like the graph below that because that's really what everybody asked about. What does that mean? Well, the 16 cents difference on a $100,000 home is $16. So that's a tax rate. The mill rate may be different, depends on how each municipality is evaluated. But that is what, if everything stayed the same from one year to the next, that's the difference you would see. And then the pie chart below that is just the distribution of proposed tax decrease based on levy allocation. And then the pie chart, the last pie charts talk about the budget expenses, kind of do that. And then looks at the budget by function. And then always on our last page is our strategic plan that we always have to try and live up to. So that's all I have and there's nobody from the public here, so. I'll be back.
Hey, no public comment, then we will close the public hearing. And move on to reports. Department report, Ryan Kelly.
All right. Good evening. So I'm Ryan Kelly, the highway commissioner. I'm here to give my annual report. And this report is required by state statute 8301. Actually telling me all the boring things I'm supposed to tell you about, but I'll try and liven it up a little bit and give you some of the interesting things from the year too. Talk about some of our performance measures we look at from year to year, go through the financial update. This year and next year's highway improvements and equipment and vehicle purchases. And then talk about some special projects that we're kind of proud of from this year. And I'll close it with overview of our committee and staff members and any questions you have at the end. First performance measure we look at is road construction. We resurfaced 12.7 miles of road this year out of the 489 centerline miles. So seven of that was the emergency repairs on Highway F. So 12.7 is a higher year than normal, but again, seven of that was emergency repairs. If we were going to get on the recommended 25-year pavement replacement cycle, we'd be doing about 20 miles a year. So we'd like to see that number increase over time. Chip seal, we did 16.8 miles, only a 29.1 maintenance cycle. We'd like to see about three chip seals per paving cycle, so a seven-year cycle. And we'd be doing 70 miles a year if we were going to get to that. Quite a ways to go there. We've done some more culvert census report, but we'd only done about nine culverts at that time. 51,800 tons of hot mix, and that's up to about 63,000 now, which is a normal year for us. Gravel produce 126,000, that's up to about 147,000. So in the last month or so, we've done quite a bit of work. 735,900 for local municipalities. We usually figure on doing about 1.4 million. So even though we've, we're up to about 922,000 now, it's still going to be a light year for municipal work. And then work for other departments is down as well. We usually figure on about 120,000. And as of today, we're actually up to about 71,000. Other performance measures, you know, snow plowing, we had kind of a mild winter. A lot of smaller events, so the hours aren't quite down as much as you'd think. But the material usage is down nicely. Salt used on the roads, 3,400 tons on the county. Previous year was 4,600, so we saved some salt on the county. I'm sorry, the previous year was 7,600, so we cut that in about half. And we saved a bunch on the state as well, 5,300 this year. Previously, we had about 12,600. So we had a good year for brine use. We know that the more brine we use, we can save salt. So we're continuing to equip our equipment with more and more brine capabilities. Sand salt was way down as well. We actually had to cover a bunch of our sand piles that normally would have got put on the road over last winter. Problem with that is we had to cover them for the summer months, so. Workers' comp, kind of a okay year, I guess. We would like to see that lower, obviously. 24,500 in expenses. With 10 claims, that's about 2,400 each. Five-year average being closer to 62,000. So we're below the five-year average, but we had a couple of bad injuries this year that we'd like to not see happen again. And hopefully we can keep that much lower in the future. 49 lost days this year up till September 18th and 164 light duty days. These are our non-lapsing funds. It's kind of hard to see there, but. There you go. So these fund balances at the end of 2021 will all carry forward and becoming our, become our year 22 beginning fund balances. So I'm going to kind of summarize where each of these funds are at right now and where we expect to see them at the end of the year. So the admin fund, that funds our office staff, including myself. We started out the year 150,000 in the red. We're projecting to decrease that to about 100,000 in the red. So we didn't get it all fixed this year, but we're moving in the right direction. And we did put 40,000 additional levy in there in next year's budget. So we hope to see that deficit gone at the end of '22. The land acquisition, really nothing new to report. We've got 368,000 in there. And my goal is to purchase a new pit in '22. So we're busy looking and we want to be able to move quickly when we find a good pit, a good price and good materials. It's hard to come by in good locations in this county. There's a lot up north off the beaten path, but we would like to be more centralized. So we're really looking hard down here on the central part of the county. Machinery, it's really hard to anticipate machinery at this point in the year. But we do look at historical years in the past of what we looked at this time of year. And we kind of line right up with what we had in 2020. And then we ended up with about 1.2 million in machinery revenues in 2020. And we'd like to see that be our year-end. Machinery revenues, that's a good year for us and that allows us to purchase the equipment and vehicles we need next year. So maintenance is broken down into general maintenance and county maintenance. The bad news is general maintenance had a rough year. We're actually projecting that we're going to see that $190,000 deficit increase to about $340,000 by the end of the year. And in anticipation of that, we've taken 200,000 of the winter maintenance levy from next year and shifted it into general maintenance. The good news is that we're going to see bigger savings than that in winter maintenance. We usually see about 550,000 of expenses from this point of the year till the end of the year. So we're projecting that, that year-end fund balance could increase to around 770,000 by the end of the year. So that's kind of why we shifted that 200,000 levy also. So overall, the top total maintenance line, we're projecting that we're going to see that fund balance increase from about 339 to about 430. So we're projecting about $90,000 increase in the maintenance fund balance. Even though county maintenance doesn't look so good, winter maintenance looks really good. The other funds are covered in the financial reports I'll cover in a minute. Road construction, bridge construction, and town bridge construction. Gravel pits also had a really good year. We're projecting a surplus of about 250,000 for this year in our yearly operations. And so we're hoping that the fund balance there will go from a $413,000 deficit to around 150 or 200,000 at the end of the year. We knew we couldn't fix that in one year, but we had a really good year in the pits. And one or two more years, we'll be in really good shape in our pits again. And then the non-highway fleet, two parts of this, the operation, which is the day-to-day wear and tear, that's funded by charges to other departments and $200,000 in levy. We're actually projecting that that fund balance is going to increase by at least 60,000 to around $230,000 deficit. We didn't have nearly the revenues from other departments. We were hoping to see, usage is just down. We also didn't have the expenses either, but we're projecting that fund balance is going to, is going to look worse at the end of the year. We did budget 275,000 a levy for next year to try and start addressing that. But I really think we need to look at revenue and especially billing to other departments to correct this. Non-highway fleet, vehicle purchasing, that's a little easier to manage because we just buy less vehicles if we don't have the funds. And last year's report, we talked about purchasing four sheriff utilities, two vans, and four courthouse sedans. We didn't purchase those four courthouse sedans this year, we purchased next year. So we think we're going to be sitting right around 40,000 in the deficit on this fund balance, which is 20,000 better than we started. We also increased the sales tax in our budget next year to 275 in this part of the non-highway fleet fund. So we know that decreasing the vehicle purchasing is going to lead to older and older, older and older vehicles. And that's where the costs are going to go up on the operations side too. So something to keep in mind. The next report is the county bridge and culvert aid for towns. This is the 50-50 aid that you'll be approving later tonight. This is our share, the 50% that the county pays, the pass-through levy that's assessed to the other towns. So a bit of a insurance policy for the towns when they have a large culvert or bridge they need to replace. The ones you can see here are this year's projects. And those will all be finalized out at the end of the year. And we'll start '22 with a fresh list of projects that are on the resolution later. Bridge construction, we've got only a few bridges on the report this year. Cobble and bridge design work is on there. That'll be wrapping up here now and getting ready to bid that this winter and start construction in the spring. So we'll see the bridge demolition take place next year. And we'll see some of the substructure work down in the water take place next year too. So that'll be a two-year project. The K project is just an old project with state bills that we're waiting for. Q is the bridge near the roundabout that we built last year that we finished the paving on this, this year. So that'll be finalized out. The S bridge we built this year, that came in well under budget. And we'll save a little bit of money on that one for next year to put the final surface mat asphalt on that too. And then highway construction projects for this year. So there's, the first one is just an old DOT project that we finally got our final billing on, the Highway S project. Next one is double S design work for next year's construction project. It's in our CIP. Third one is double S that we, that we built this year. It's showing a deficit of 641,000. That's because the levy, or the bonding hasn't been transferred yet. We have a million and 50 of bonding that's budgeted for this project. And we actually won't use all that, so we'll have to put bonding on some of the other construction projects. But that's a good thing to have. And a couple of design projects in Lafayette. The J and 50th roundabout that's going to get built in a couple of years. And the Safe Routes to School project out to Stillson Elementary that we're helping them with. And then Highway M and Lake Holcomb is one of the only active projects left. They're putting in the storm sewer up there. It's a little bit more work than we anticipated, but it's, it's wrapping up here in the next week or so. We will see some overruns on that project with the time and materials that it took to deal with the water up there. But we'll have savings on some of these other projects that will more than offset that. The Highway M project down in Wheaton, we had good savings out there, over 90,000. The Highway J project in Lafayette, again, almost 100,000 in savings. Double O had some savings mainly because we shortened it up to clear up some money for Highway F to shift some money over there. And then F, 1.45 million. We've, we finished all the paving except the surface mat. So we're going to need a few hundred thousand next year to put the surface mat on. So we'll have, we'll calculate that at the end of the year and transfer some money into that project. And that'll carry over to next year to finish that one. Rut wedging had a slight savings and chip sealing slightly ran over. So those two kind of, we make sure those two kind of offset each other. If one runs over, the other runs under. We didn't have to hire any consultants for miscellaneous engineering. And miscellaneous culverts looks good. We'll have some more bills coming in there yet. All in all, the construction report looks pretty good. We'll see that fund balance come up a little bit at the end of the year and the contingency, which is good. It's lower than it's been in the past right now. Next year's projects, you can see, these are just the projects from our CIP. Probably won't go through all of them, but the key projects. I probably won't go through all of them, but the key projects for next year, highway double S, we'll finish that last stretch up by New Auburn. One of the worst roads in the county, so it's going to be real nice to have that done. 2.7 miles. It's, it's an expensive project because there's two bridges that go with it and that's a federal aid project. So that'll be let out to a contractor. So we'll get to see how our project stands up next to the contractor next year. Highway T, bridge replacement. Highway double X, it was, it was a road in Lafayette that we had some pavement damage on a couple of years ago from some heavy loads that were trucked off highway 29. That's finally getting replaced, three miles. X in front of the golf course coming into Cadott, a two and a half mile stretch. And then of course, the first part of Cobble. We'll be resurfacing highway S here in town between the two roundabouts, one of our busiest roads. So that'll be interesting. And then a project out on the west side on highway N from T out to 40th, just two miles out there. Otherwise, it's just pretty standard projects, a little more chip seal. We put another 100,000 in the chip seal next year to try and stretch out those miles a little bit. We have 580,000 in that next year. 2021, equipment and vehicle purchases. So these are the machines that we purchased this year. A lot of them had to be ordered last year to get them here in time even. The lead time has gotten really ridiculous on some of these pieces of equipment. Two CTL compact track loaders, one compact grader, a new rubber machine, which was a huge improvement because it's got two rubber ones, they can move down the road much faster. A trailer mounted boom to get up in some of our higher job sites and facilities, repairs. Three pickup trucks for the crew that they'll, they'll go to the superintendents and then superintendent trucks get passed down to the crew. A new low boy trailer and then a new patch trailer and of course, the three patrol trucks. Very regimented on sticking to the three patrol trucks every year. We have 47 of them, so I don't want to start slipping on that and have them get any older than 15 years. 2022, so these are the vehicles and equipment for next year. The three patrol trucks again. We just signed the contract today on a new sign truck and the lead time is so long on that one, we don't even know if we'll have it next year. The chassis will be here hopefully in September, they're saying at the soonest. And then it has to go out to get built, so get all the specialty equipment built. So likely won't see that one in action until 2023 even. And then we have so much needed upgrades in our hot mix plant. We finished out the year with no huge breakdowns in our hot mix plant, but it's definitely time. It's very outdated and shouldn't say we had no breakdowns. We had a breakdown yesterday, but Rust County was the ones that were, were waiting for mix and it wasn't our crew luckily. It's just an old setup and it's, it's really time for upgrades. 2021, non-highway fleet again, just the four sheriff utilities and the two vans. 2022, we're looking at four sedans. Selection of sedans out there is getting less and less. Basically Ford's only making a Mustang now, they tell us, and I don't think that's going to pass the smell test, so we're not going to go there. But Chevy doesn't make the Impala anymore either apparently. So we're looking at Malibu's, which are just a little bit smaller, but everything's pushing us into these crossovers and SUVs, which is eventually where we're going to have to go. But right now I think we can stick with the Malibu's. A pickup for facilities in fleet or facilities in parks, a pickup for LCFM and then three utilities for sheriff and one utility for the sheriff K9 unit. These are all looking at four to five months of lead time. So we're actually looking to order those here in the next month or so also. So some special projects, just to highlight that we're pretty proud of, obviously the highway double S project, a lot of good compliments came back on that one. 2.1 mile segment, 160,000 under budget, self-performed pretty much everything except the pavement milling. So it's just something we're really proud of. We designed it and surveyed it and everything from guardrail to paving. It's just a really cool project that highlights a lot of the capabilities of the highway department. We put new overhead doors in the shop here in Chippewa. There's eight of them. You can see in the picture, there's still one of the old ones left in this picture and the amount of light that comes in is just, it's totally night and day in there. It's, you know, we don't need all the lights on even during the day. It's so bright in there and just really changes the atmosphere in there. It's, it's much more pleasant in there and the guys love it. Apparently those doors are 40 to 50 years old, they tell us, but none of us were really here to prove that. And then one big change for our staff was going to an electronic timekeeping program in July. So we used to do paper time cards and a lot of, a lot of mistakes the supervisors and Joe's staff would have to correct and find. This really eliminates a lot of those mistakes because the, when they punch in a job number or a work type or type of material, it comes up on the screen and they can see if it's the right thing. Little bit of learning curve with the technology, but now at least half the employees are doing it on their cell phones even. So we don't even need all the tablets and laptops that we initially thought we needed. Saves a lot of time on the fiscal end too. Payroll Monday is a snap now, like as long as the time's in in time. We actually, we paid our, our payroll every week just to, just so that it's done on a routine every week. Highway F, this was obviously a pretty unique project. We didn't anticipate this one. We, we got out there right away and, and got it taken care of when it failed, but it, it needed more than that. It needed more than just some maintenance that had to be replaced. We put three inches of gravel down and pulverized it in place and paved it with a really stiff, heavy-duty, two and a half inch base mat, our largest stone that we make. So it's just a really solid road. There was some question if there was some soft gravel underneath yet from water pumping up. So we decided to leave the surface mat off until next year. So that'll be, we'll get out there early next year and put the surface mat on there. But if something did crack and come through, we didn't want that to come through the final mat. We'd rather give it a winter and just make sure everything sits good. So we have an old picture of the highway committee with our staff from back in the day and this is our highway committee now. Glenn's the chair and the rest of them are shown on there. And then our staff, we have 75 full-time employees in the highway department. Nine of us are salaried managers with the highway department. 63 hourly operations employees that handle all the day-to-day stuff. And then Joe was our fiscal manager, actually a DOA employee, but funded by the highway department. And we, Joe has an account clerk under him and an administrative assistant under him and I. We try and hire as many as 10 seasonal LTEs and laborers for flagging. We have a hard time keeping those. A lot of them get taken up with full-time vacancies. They come on board that way or they go to other positions when they find full-time work. Pretty easy for CDL people especially to find jobs right now. So it's hard to find seasonals. We are looking right now for two winter LTE seasonal operators. We've got an employee that's going to be out for quite a while on medical leave and we've got another on a injury, a worker's comp injury that's going out for a few months. So we're going to be a little shorthanded, so we'd like to get a couple more spares on for the winter. So overall, our total payroll for last year was around 4.2 million dollars. So it's a pretty big operation. This is the org chart. Again, it's in your book. All these slides are pretty much right out of your book. The only thing to update from this is we did promote Eric Gable, our sign coordinator up to county patrol superintendent this week. So I'm sure Eric will be in some point in here with me talking about maintenance if there's anything like that that we need to cover. So we do share this report with all the towns, all the town sheriff people. Get a copy of the report mailed to them. We try and be open and transparent with them and make sure we have good relationships with them. We want to help them anytime we can. It's good for both of us. It's good for us to get people off our payroll when, when we can and it's good for them to save them some money and not have to hire everything out to contractors. And then all of our employees get a copy of this too. They love seeing the projects highlighted and, you know, some of them really appreciate some of the information that they didn't used to have access to. With that, that's about all I had for now. I'm always happy to give a tour of the highway department if anybody wants to come out and take a ride along even. We can go out and see the hot mix plant or anything like that, depending on what time of year it is. Or if you just want to sit down over anything with our operation in my office, door's always open. If there's any questions, I can try and answer them.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Ken, you have one?
Yeah, I got a question for him. He's trying to formulate it.
We got to see some animation here.
So on our pavement replacement cycle, we're behind and our chip ceiling, we're way behind. At what point is this going to really bite us and we're not, we're not going to have any way of keeping infrastructure in decent condition?
We kind of, we dug way into that about a year and a half ago or so and, and we're actually going to bring that back to the next, next board meeting. Well, not, not next week's board meeting, but the December board meeting. There's some projections on, on how our pavement's going to decline if we don't, if we don't more. And we know there needs to be more revenue to do that and Randy and I have somewhat of a plan we want to talk about with that. But it is start, we are seeing the pavement decline, especially out in the far rural areas. Don't see a lot of traffic up there, so it's hard to justify fixing those roads over ones that have a thousand cars a day sometimes, but we try and get the worst ones.
Depends on which road you're driving on.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. All right, we will move, move on to business items. Might as well stay right up to Brian.
Resolution number 46 dash 21, resolution to approve funds for county aid construction and maintenance during calendar year 2022. Now therefore be it resolved that the county highway department is authorized and directed to expend the said sums below to the extent required to match and supplement federal and state aid for construction, right-of-way and other costs on any federal and state projects located on the county trunk highway system of said county, which are not recovered from federal and state funds and to expend any balance for construction, repairing and maintaining such county trunk highway system and bridges thereon, including snow and ice removal and control as directed in statute 83.0152 of those laws and statutes and to reimburse the general fund for any expenditure that may be there from pursuant to 83.016 of those laws and statutes. The distribution to such purposes is estimated but not specifically directed to be as follows. A tax levy for general maintenance on the county trunk highway system, highway operations and non-highway fleet in the sum of $4,473,648. Bonding for bridge construction and construction on the county highway system in the sum of $1,300,000 per resolution 30-20. Sales tax funding for bridge construction and construction on the county highway system and non-highway fleet in the sum of $1,875,000 per resolution 22-21. Be it further resolved that the county board does hereby levy a tax on all of the property in the county to meet such appropriations in the sum of $4,473,648. And be it further resolved that the proposed projects for the maintenance, construction of roads and bridges for 2022 is based on current conditions, but in the event of unforeseen conditions, the highway commissioner may substitute alternative projects as necessary. And be it further resolved that the county board does hereby direct that any balance remaining in any appropriation for a specific highway improvement after the same shall have been completed, may have been completed, may be used by the county highway department to complete additional improvements deemed necessary by the highway commissioner and any balance remaining at the end of the year and any highway fund shall remain and be available for the same purpose in the ensuing year. Boarded to the county board by the highway committee.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded?
Well, it's really everything I talked about tonight with next year's projects and it's straight off the CIP. It funds our, all of our road and bridge construction and maintenance. It funds our county aid, bridge construction for the towns and our admin and then on highway fleet. So it's everything that we talked about earlier.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none? We will call the vote. Those in favor, press yes. Those opposed, press no.
10 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Okay. Ready for the next? Okay.
This one's not as long.
All right. Resolution 47-21.
Resolution 47-21, resolution to approve county aid in 2022 for bridges and culverts. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa county board of supervisors does hereby levy a tax to meet the appropriations for the 2022 projects set out above on all of the property in the county, which is taxable for such purposes. Be it further resolved that the county board does hereby direct that any balance remaining in any appropriation for a specific improvement after the same shall have been completed, may be used to make up any deficit that may occur to any other improvement for which provision is herein made. Any balance remaining at the end of the year shall remain in this fund and be available for the same purpose in the ensuing year. Boarded to the county board by the highway committee.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded?
Okay. Well, it's, it's pretty self-explanatory. These are the towns that petitioned us by the July budget cutoff and they all have projects that are eligible, 36-inch or larger culverts. Eagle Point has the biggest, that's a bridge and we actually built that bridge already this year. So they're funding it until, you know, January, when they can get funds out of this, this account. But the only other thing that could change in this is if town comes forward with an emergency. I think Seagull came in, they had a bad pipe that during a flood that was destroyed. We helped them out and gave them some emergency funds and that's allowed in statutes as well. We do have a good fund balance in there, so we keep that in there in case something happens like that. It's only happened once that I know of, but that could happen. That's the only thing that could be different than what's on this list.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, then we'll call the vote. Those in favor would press yes and those opposed would press no.
10 yes, 0 no.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, approval of the 2022 county budget. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Schultz?
So this is your opportunity, ask any questions, make any comments, do any amendments to the budget.
Mr. Schmidt?
I had two constituents approach me in the last month. One was this morning. I'll take his question first or his, he's on jury duty and he says he gets $25 per diem. He says, and all the boards and commissions of the county get $35 per diem. He didn't think that was quite right as an observation, so take that for what it's worth. The other question is, where are we channeling our economic development efforts and money at this time in this budget?
Are you mean looking for the new, the next?
The next year. What are we, what are we concentrating on? What are we? I mean, everybody's looking for workers. One constituent figured that we should be putting effort into finding employees or... One constituent figured that we should be putting effort into finding employees or helping employers that we already have, more than looking for new employers and new businesses.
Yeah, I mean, Charlie Walker's, you know, the head of that essentially, but they're always looking at retention for employees, you know, anything that, any company, Mason just expanded, obviously, that's a local company, instead of looking for new, you know, something new going into the business park, that's a retention project. So there, he's always looking for different, different avenues for retention. We just did a revolving loan fund for a business up in Blumer that got approved last night by the Economic Development Committee. I think we just paid off another loan in that revolving loan fund. I think it's getting paid off tomorrow, right? So utilizing that for extending businesses. We're obviously looking for new ground. We continue to look at that. Charles got feelers out for that, so that's really where the efforts are. Lee, you're the chair of that. I don't know if I missed anything or anything else to add?
Yeah, yeah. I think one of the big things, talk about retention of employees and recruitment of employees, the Chippewa County Economic Development Corporation, that there is a member, an elected member on that corporation, too, their board, and they are working on video presentations and advertisements. They've hosted several job fairs, and the job, they're not just their typical job fair, they've been kind of unique and highly publicized and recruited. Also working on a long-range plan here in this county, along with neighboring counties, to help people understand, to help the young people in high schools understand that industry-type jobs, assembly line-type jobs, and factory-type jobs are not what they used to be. They're not, they're not dark, they're not dirty, and they're not dangerous. They're, they are something to strive for and work for, and that, that they're, they're, they do offer an opportunity. So we are, you know, we're encouraging that corporation to move forward with that, and they're doing it. I think they're doing it a very innovative way, so your constituents' concerns are bright light in the world of economic development, and, and there is, there is work being done. It's gonna be slow to go because the population is changing, there's a whole lot of us that are going out of the workforce and not so many coming in.
Yeah, I think we have had the conversation, too, of looking, I mean, typically, economic development's looked at job creation and the ability to add more jobs, as it's been tougher and tougher filling those jobs, it's kind of turning to automation, inability to still build the company without having to add additional bodies to it, because it's just a different world. I mean, so that's a whole swing for economic development from what it's always been. I think CVIC, too, is something to point out, you know, that's our incubator. We are still trying to work with the feds to try and get some funding for that, that came before the county board. I know Planning Commission continues to try and communicate with them and see if there's opportunities there, too. I think that's, that, if that can go through and that's affordable to the, our county and Chippewa, or our county and Eau Claire County and the city, I think that would be another big area for improvement.
Supervisor Steele?
Yeah, the total budget, $99 million, $416,000. I thought I heard you say that it went up because of self-funding the $8 million balance.
Yeah.
Did we had to put $8 million in here, or did we get $8 million refund back from the insurance company to put in?
I'm gonna have Lori come up and explain that to you, because I spent three days talking to her about it, so maybe she can do a better job explaining it than I could.
You're gonna say it, then. Didn't save us any money for $100,000 of the fund.
Yes, so this is how I explained it to Randy. So when we were originally paying security health plan for our fully insured plan per month, what we're doing is instead of paying security health plan, we're going and paying ourselves in that fund, 703. So that's what we're doing instead. Instead of it sitting in the liability, we're going and sending it into the 703 fund, which is like our, our health insurance company, let's say. So is that, does that?
So we had to, we actually had to set that up. So before that money was going out, now we actually had to set up a fund, so it looks like our, our budget increased by that amount because we're accounting for it. There are counties, and we looked at this, that don't put that in their overall budget, but we didn't think that was as transparent as it should be, so we made the decision that we should put that in there so you understand that even though it's not increasing our cost, it's being accounted for in the full budget.
So you're starting out January 1 of '22 with zero, and then you're gonna make monthly payments to?
Well.
We have, we have some fund balance in there, where we've been putting, we've been anticipating going self-funded, so we, we put some money in that. We also, there's also, the, the first three months, six months, it depends on who you talk to, the previous, we'll put revenue into there from our premiums, but the expenditures are still gonna be in the previous health insurance, so that'll help build that fund balance, and then when our claims start hitting, then we'll have money in there or on that.
Yeah, just.
I agree. We watched three days.
I was kind of shocked when we said, you know, it ain't gonna cost us anything, but here's $8 million.
Yeah, I agree with you 100%.
But it does make sense what I'm trying to explain, though.
Yeah, I.
It's like, we could say it's security health plan over there on that 703 fund.
So in other words, that's how much they're making off us.
They were making a lot.
They were making quite that much, but they were making.
Yeah, quite a bit of it. Yeah, okay. Another question?
Okay, go ahead.
Tried to find it, but how much are we in a budget? We have set aside in the budget, or taking a look at our different wells situation that we have?
Yep, so that was that CIP that came through for facility, or for land conservation forest management. I'm gonna say the number's about $68,000. Does that sound right? That's what came through for that testing you're talking about for the Stevens Point project. We can look up the CIP if you want us to look, but it's.
Okay, if it's $68,000 to do that, gather the data, what are we putting away to help alleviate the problem?
Nothing.
We have not.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing, we don't even know how to alleviate the problem, right? So there's nothing put aside for reducing, you're talking about reducing nitrate.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have, there's no plan, there's no, there's nothing set aside for that. That was gonna be the purpose of that committee, remember, and that committee never happened.
Squashed. So we have identified the problems since 1985, gathered the data, and we still have that.
Correct. Yeah, we, I talked to a county, we're, what we're working on is having a statewide meeting through WCA. The chair asked me to organize this, so I contacted the, the president of our organization and talked to Kyle Christiansen, who's with the WCA. There are other counties doing projects like this, so what I asked them to do, because we don't, whatever they're doing, we wanna see the work they put in, but we know there's counties been testing before us and still haven't done anything, because I don't think people know how to tackle the problem. So we're looking at doing a statewide, either WebEx or actually meeting points normally where they meet, so we're working on that to see, because we don't wanna reinvent the wheel. If there's something that's working out there, we wanna, we wanna do that, so we're moving forward with that. Do you have the dollar mark?
Oh, yeah, you know what, that was where they're using fund balance. Yeah, so this was one sales tax.
Oh, they had to use fund balance because it wasn't a CIP project. You're right.
It was, it was CIP, but not using sales tax.
Yeah.
It turns me that we haven't even started a fund looking ahead to slowly build up, because it's gonna be a very, very, very expensive project.
Yeah, but you have to identify who's gonna pay for that. I mean, we don't know that's our, that we pay for that. It could be, it could be the landowner, it could be who created the pollution, we don't know. I mean, until we define it, figure that out, I don't know how you'd do that.
The county is gonna be involved.
Maybe. I mean, that's up to the county board, I mean.
Well, I could show you examples where the government knew there was a problem. We know there's a problem, and they didn't correct it, and they went to jail, so.
Yeah, but those are all city structures that they knew they had issues with their infrastructure. This is not.
No, 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 it isn't.
No, I haven't seen anything that had to do with a county outside any type of municipality.
It was a city, but it has nothing to do with their infrastructure.
Didn't have to do with their pipes?
Had something to do with the sources of water.
And they knew about it.
Yes.
Right. So there, those, that source of water was purposely being given to people, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we're not, we're not purposely giving water to anybody. I, I agree, we need to deal with it, and we've talked a lot about this, and I'm all for it, but I don't know what that looks like until we can spend some time looking at it. You got it? Okay, it's $59,000.
That's all we're gonna pay. Stevens Point, $59,000 to survey our wells.
Mr. Mastopol is here. Is that the cost of the contract with Stevens Point, $59,000?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I've always, every budget, I've always brought up different departments charging other departments to do work for them, and I think it's creating a whole accounting structure that's not necessary. We have people keeping the books to see which department owes which department, and if funds would go to the department to do it, wouldn't have to do anything.
I know, you've talked about that a lot, and we've explained that we have certain ways we have to do things. We have government, we have standards in accounting. We have to take into revenues and the departments they're coming into and the expenditure that they're going out of. We don't have a choice. We can't decide that revenues coming in the forestry go to the sheriff's department directly. We have to account for, and auditors would lose their minds. We said, don't, that money's going over there, and so we're, because, just because we don't wanna do an internal transfer, that won't work. I mean, our, our auditors won't allow it.
On every issue.
I don't know, every issue, you'd have to break down every issue, but yeah, I mean, you have to count where your revenues come into and your expenditures go out.
Right.
Right, and the other point that you'd wanna make, too, is that you wanna be able to know how much the forest actually costs, so patrolling the forest, you're gonna get a good feel of how much it costs for having the forest, you know, and that would include with the patrolling of the forest.
But we don't ever see a bill. We see a total for the year, but we don't ever see a bill.
Who doesn't see a bill?
Us people.
County board? You guys don't see any bills. I don't know what you mean by seeing the bill.
Well, she says that, that way you can track what it is, how much it is during the time, and we can't do that.
Yeah, you'll see the expenditure for the department.
For the year.
Yeah, but you see, you see the total expenditures for all the years. You don't see Brian, what he costs him to go plow snow each time, or how much fuel it costs to fill up his vehicles, but you see the total cost of his operations.
I bet you Brian's department could give you those figures.
Well, I could give them, we can give them to you for whatever you want. We, we know the numbers.
Highway Department could give you those figures.
We can give you those numbers, too, for any.
It's a different accounting system there.
It's not different.
Actually, we were able to get that same information that you're asking for, what that sheriff spell is to the land conservation.
If we were doing something inappropriately, we would not pass our audits.
That's correct.
Yeah, they would, they'd make it a finding, or they'd, yeah, they would ding us, or if we did, tried something like that, we would get dinged.
You would, you would hear about it in that report.
And I understand the complexity of it, because I gotta deal with it, too. And I, like I say, I know the budget really well. Lori knows the budget 10 times better than I do, and she understands a lot of the ins and outs, even, you wanna talk complexity, talk DHS, talk public health, I mean, the complexities of them, use of Medicare, Medicaid, and all those is beyond. It drives us crazy, so we get it.
Any further questions? Discussion further? All right, we will follow the vote for approval of the 2022 county budget. In favor, say yes. All right. I will seek a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Motion's been seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you for your time.